Alright, good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at this time, please. Turn all cell phones, lecturing devices to off and vibrate at this time. And Ms. Charlie Kelly, would you please listen to our prayer and thank the city?
Our dear heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask, Lord, that you will watch over and protect all our servicemen, our police department, and our fire department. We ask, Lord, that you will guide and direct us, Lord, and take the path that you need us to take as we carry on the business for the city of Ballinger. In your precious name, amen.
Amen.
Our prayers are the words of the United States of America. We pray that we will be able to support the citizens of our nation under God and in the mission of which there is no question.
Thank you very much, Ms. Charlie. Alright, consider the approval of the minutes of the March 6th, 2017 to me. Everybody had time to review?
I did not see any error.
You did not see any error? Did you not see any error? You weren't? Okay.
Can we have a favor of the minute, Mr. President?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, business who are not on regular due notice will be given the opportunity to address and counsel on any subject at this time. Is anyone present that is not on the agenda this evening? Everybody jump up and down. Okay, good deal. Moving on. Discuss and take action on the request to close railroad avenue between Sixth Street and Broadway for the long-term or market debate on April 28th through 29th, 2017. Everybody have a...
I'll make that motion.
Everything good?
I don't have any problem.
I have nothing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Do we have dumpsters? Do you need excess dumpsters?
I do. If you guys want to furnish them, I would appreciate it if you can furnish them. And that's something I didn't put on the duty list.
About $100 a day for the dumpster?
$100 a day.
I'll tell you why I'm here to start getting rid of it.
I think that's the standard difference, right?
Yeah, that's the standard difference.
In that case, you just want to pick up three times a day.
Exactly.
It's how I mess with you, David.
The reason I asked is, uh, Republic, um, have you ordered them yet?
Uh, no, you guys ordered them before.
Okay.
You've ordered them in the past.
Yeah, okay. Well, uh, we need to jump on that pretty quick. And then, if it's...
Yeah, that'd be the same way you guys know it'd be... We're gonna try that, and I think it'll work. I think it'll be advantageous for the whole town to do that.
We'll take care of that tomorrow.
Alright. Discuss and take action, uh, on the request to make improvement. It says improvement. I'll say improvements to the Indian field located on Steely Avenue. Is that your reason for being here, sir?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, awesome.
Thank y'all for having me today. Um, as you can see, what they call Old Indian Field downtown, um, it's way past that, Dave. The reason I even bring this up, this town doesn't have facilities for all the kids that are playing baseball. There is at least five or six teams that are trying to... Some are going to Rowena, some are playing all over the place. Some can't get on the high school field. The high school won't let them on the field. We've got so many little teams, not just little leaguers and up to 12-year-olds playing. Guys, we've got a lot of select teams in this town that are traveling and trying to get better, not only in baseball, but in softball. There's no facilities for all these kids to practice. School doesn't have the money to do it. I visited with Brian on it, um... My thinking is this year, we just... Every time we come through town, we're gonna spray it and just try to keep killing it, to kill the grass birds off of it, because the grass birds are terrible. Brian and I even talked about, because y'all own so much land down there around that field, you could turn that field around and make quads out of it, and you could host tournaments for one age group of this town whenever y'all felt like doing it. And you can make money off of it to help pay your bills. Uh, Robert Gordon told me that they had... When he was a coach at Alpine, a college baseball coach, he said the best dirt for the infield is in Ballinger, Texas, anywhere he's ever seen. Do you know where that is? That red dirt on the Colorado River. And he used to bring it up down here to load it up, to haul it back to Alpine for their infield. I have some sprinkler irrigation pipe that I would loan out until y'all could afford to put in a sprinkler system for it. The main thing right now is to decide if you want to eventually build a quad or if you want to just improve that field, or if you don't want to do anything.
Do we own all those lots there?
Uh, I think so, except that one, what Brian said, where that house is right run.
Yes. To the left of that field?
To the left, to the south, and then to the east.
If, you know, the City Yard is... Bob owns half of the lots.
No.
Not, yeah, half of the block, I should say. About half a block?
Maybe more.
Give him more, like...
Give him more, like...
And then, most of everything else from the City Yard back is owned by the city? Is that correct?
Well, yeah, we... There's several lots right around the field there that, uh, the city owns.
And then if you go back towards the south, towards the, um, lift station, that we own most of that. There's one house in the middle that we do not currently own. We own everything where Strang Brothers has their stuff right now for the bridge construction, and then everything back to the river, right? On that one track?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we own a considerable amount of property. It's in the flood zone. Um, I cannot see it being used commercially. Um, you know, you don't have to build a flood plain to do anything over it.
The main... The main start of it is, is just... We're gonna have to have something for these kids. You've got five or six age groups in the next six or seven years. It's gonna come through this town. It's gonna go through your school system and represent your community. And those kids don't have a place to practice. And I asked some of the 13-year-old dads to come up... Not 13-year-old dads, 13-year-old dads.
Is there a whole bunch of them?
I apologize. We got into a tournament last weekend down in Santa Ana. And that's all I heard was them complaining about the high school part was off limits to them. That 13-year-old age group. We... We don't need the Little League field. We don't need a T-ball field. We need a baseball field.
Can you... Can you build this, like, dual-use field?
Yes.
You can?
What you have to do is make... You can buy temporary fencing. It's a little plastic fence. And then you can make portable mounds and move the bases, and you can play just about any age group. But the problem is that you have to start with a big field first and work down to a little field.
I think that's what they do in Angelo from tournaments. They have the softball and baseball in the same. Like you said, they take that fence, plastic fencing, and set up.
Is that regulation baseball field?
Uh, yes.
It was.
Now, we have electricity. I know we ran electricity that thing, so get some pictures, man.
Pitch and shoot.
Pitch and shoot.
Well, that and when you get some kind of pipe down there to hook up... I mean, I think y'all have City Water pretty close to that, where we could start by trying to get an outfield going. You know, y'all have the manpower. We can add manpower after we get to that point. But right now, we gotta get the field cleaned up first and decide what y'all want to do with it first. You know, if you just want one field, great. I'm happy to get one field right now, but we get some of the paint. Because we're all... Our... Brian and my youngest boy, or his oldest, my youngest, is starting T-ball or baseball, and we're all jumping through the hoops to find fields to practice on for that. We get one day a week at Chandler, and then we get one day for the machine. You know, if we wanted to play two days, we're gonna have to go find the grass and lots somewhere and go practice. And no offense, but that's getting old. I've been doing it for about five or six years now. It's sitting down there vacant. It's not gonna take that much. It's just how far the city wants to go with it.
Can... When you come and spray for grass birds, weeds, whatever, you're gonna need... We're gonna need to move... Can we open up some of that fencing for him so he can track you?
Like that?
The back corner is open.
Yeah, but I need it wider.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
But what we used to sleep and clean for this year, and we put up... If the fall works out and we got all the dirt worked on and all the plant grass in the fall, that's fine. We might be able to come up and go on before frost. If not, get ready for next spring to plant. It's already too late. We can't... When you go on there and move dirt around, we're still gonna have the same issue. We're gonna have grass birds coming up like there ain't no tomorrow. And go heads. Because that's been a problem with that field since the high school quit using it. No, that's why nobody wants to go down there and practice, because you can't grab the ball to throw the baseball. It's a joke.
So what you'd be asking the city essentially is, first of all, just access to get in there to spray?
Yes.
And then, after you spray and we get the hot sign, blade off, basically, those that are maintaining are just...
Get all the trees out of it.
All the skeets.
And then, you know, controlled burn.
Yeah.
I think I heard Sam said the police department would do a controlled burn, now.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be steps. And if I have to come back later, I mean, I'll come back once a month, if that's what I gotta do, or once every two months. I mean, we gotta have somewhere to go with these, all these kids. And if y'all don't know it, because you don't have kids up there, and there's a bunch of them coming up. And there... I mean, there's a slew of them coming up. And there's even ones younger than... I mean, dads are starting at 7, maybe 9 years old.
The whole question comes, the problem we look at is, do we invest here or do we invest somewhere where we can actually extend it?
Where we can make it. You can make...
And you can put four wheels right there?
Yeah.
For that police road, I mean, that's...
You take that... You take that street out.
Yeah.
You can park. You could actually park down by the yard, and you can walk a block or two, but it's not that big of a deal. You can park.
Or you just play another lot we own and park it there.
Yeah.
Anyone that has not seen that quad field, excuse me, off of Ballin-Senajlo, it's worth the trip over. It's awesome.
Probably all I look at that is, I see money. I'm not looking at that.
Yeah, that's what my family said, too.
That's a lot of money.
I would love to have just one quad field. They've got multiples over there.
Yeah.
But that is fantastic how they've got that laid out.
Yeah.
Is there... Do you have a grant, right?
There will... There will be very few, if any, grants available...
For recreation?
For this. Parks and Wildlife, those areas dried up 15 years ago. Uh, there's a group called Field of Dreams that will help you, but you have to have engineering and architecture involved with that. And that just makes those costs go up more. If we really... If we're really talking about this, my vision would be very, very low, low costs initially. I mean, enough to put lechers up, or maybe you put some... A small section of lechers up. We can build that, couldn't see? Lechers. Small section of lechers, and most people just bring their lawn chairs.
I think if you got a little goheads, that would be a...
But it's gonna be... It's gonna be a process. And we're not gonna get it all done the first year. It's not gonna be perfect come next June. But if we don't start now, I mean, we're just wasting that many more years. Because, I mean, the principal idea of the field is there.
You could... If you put every home plate right there, you could have your quad.
Right.
Yep. We own all that.
That and your point, and we have half of that block there.
We have half of this right here?
Yeah, the upper half.
Yeah, we don't own this part right here, right? Okay.
Well, we do own one down, right?
We own from that Steely down to here, across here, and back, and then we keep on... We keep coming down this way. Does that make sense?
So we've got a lot that we can work with to do a quad?
You can do a quad... Well, even if you do a threeplex, where you can just do... We... T-ball is a concern, but it's not that big of a concern. Little League, Bayburg, Pony League, 15U, right? That's kind of the...
Yeah.
And then the softball field.
Right.
Get a dual-use under that, man.
Yeah.
Just do what we did on the fields at the high school. The only field we didn't do that on was Devonport Field, and Brian paid for all that. But the Studer Field, the baseball field, we had volunteers, and we picked up rocks. And the kids that played baseball on up there and picked up rocks. And we had volunteers that built the stands. We had volunteers that put up the fence. We got the fencing donated. Also, uh, there was tremendous amount of volunteer work. And that whole field was done by volunteer work. I'm not saying this to change anything, but you've got so many parents involved and so many kids involved. And if the parents are that involved, number one, I guess you're putting down pre-emergent, I guess. But anyway, volunteers can do a lot. I'm just telling you that from history.
But I also ask the volunteers to come today, and I'm sitting here by myself.
I know, but... And that's why... And that's why that happens a lot, but sometimes it... Anyway.
And I understand where you're going with Sam, but the thing is about if the city owns the property.
Right.
And I've gotta ask y'all before I can even do anything.
Exactly.
Because I don't own the property.
Exactly.
So Brian, I made you a request to get this field ready.
Yes, sir.
Scalp it, get it ready for grass planting.
Yes, sir.
Oh, or whatever. And have access to water.
Yes, sir.
That's immediate.
That's right, right.
Lechers can come.
All that stuff, solid as a...
That's just future down the road, don't it? We can get one operational, and then if y'all wanna do something down the road, if y'all feel, you know...
We can have to have some batteries eventually.
Right.
So...
We... Yeah. We have to... I... In my mind, what you're talking about, the initial upfront, very small cost of it, it all for the city, other than labor and...
I just think, don't we decide, is if we're gonna do...
What's the plan?
Pre-plex, what's the plan, right? Because I don't want to spend a lot of money on that field when they don't have...
Let's... Yeah.
No, it'd be better if we did it down here, or... I mean, and that's a quick decision, right?
Yeah.
You guys will make that.
Yeah. Um, the other... You know, if you... If you kind of move this thing forward, if you wanted to do, um... Because if you... If the soccer program takes off, you have limited... You're gonna have limited places to practice soccer. You're gonna have limited places to practice volleyball, or football, or youth football, or whatever. So having open spaces is not the worst... Maybe not necessarily designated park for player and equipment, but just open spaces for teams to play and, and, and practice and all those other things. That's probably one of the biggest drivers of this, is that correct?
Yes, because, I mean, uh... Every set of dads in the age group is complaining about the same thing. There's no facilities to practice in this town.
Right. So that might be...
Right. And it... It's just sitting down there. Um, I'm not... I'm gonna start with y'all first. But I... I'm with Brian. I mean, whatever y'all decide, we... We need to turn that field now, or that field needs to stay like it is forever. Because once you spend the money, time, and effort to go in there and do it, you don't want to have to tear it up and spin it back around for what you want to do down the road. And, you know, like this year, Angela used to host just two tournaments for my seven and age group, which is 12 and 13-year-olds. They've got six on this now this year. Now, I understand that's a... It has four quads over there. So they're getting from eight-year-olds all the way to 16-year-olds or 14-year-olds playing baseball. I'm not asking for that either unless it happens down the road. But we gotta start somewhere.
You want to do the... Go ahead and initial request to let them spray? Because it's gonna take a while for you to...
It's... We're gonna have to go across it at least once a month.
If we... If we approve the request right now, we're still not doing anything dirt-wise for months.
Months. No, because we need to spend three or four months just killing what's out there. And yes, I am gonna put pre-market down, but we gotta get approval first.
And DDT?
For is, uh... It's gonna be pretty rough down there for a while, that's all I gotta say.
Shiny carpet.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the request, uh, spray weed killer and pre-emergent on Indian field.
Pre-emergent for pre-emergent?
Well, whenever he wants to do it, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's down the fault.
Yeah.
You know, I second that.
You want to do anything after that, or you just want to start with the weed killer now, and then you authorize any dirt work?
I think... I think we just need to start with weed, or... Because before we do dirt work, it's not gonna hurt to spray weed killer on that thing, because even if you spin that thing around and want to make...
Yeah.
It's still gonna get that whole area.
Just second shot. All better? Yeah. Thank y'all for your time.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for going?
Yep. Y'all take care.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, thank y'all.
Alright, discuss and take action on the record. I am telling for to consider variance request from Johnny Terry, Pryor 306, 18th Street, Lot 9, Block 105, person from our vote edition.
Okay, we met. The T-N League board met. And, um, with the, uh... We actually had a recommendation. They couldn't... The board really couldn't... They really didn't see that they could allow the, uh, imposing number of five foot setback. Four and different ways written in the code book. Uh, you know, five foot and five foot. So... If one of y'all want... Oh, you can't go? Oh, I'm sorry. So...
I guess...
Unless they ever have something that...
You're on P and Z? Nothing.
Yeah. Here's what I struggle with. Uh, number one, we have a variance process for a reason, right? What I struggle with is whoever buys this house, you can never, ever have a garage to protect your cars. Period. Ever. And I struggle with that. I mean, that... You know, it'd be one thing if the neighbor was jumping up and down screaming.
Yeah, I don't remember if you... If she came with you at the last meeting.
No.
But, you know, she is... She is all part of this.
Yeah, she was okay with it. Yeah, neither one of those... We'll be able to have a carport. Well, but even if I was selling the house and I thought it was gonna hurt me, I definitely wouldn't let it happen. If it's gonna hurt the market value of the house, you wouldn't let that go up.
And homeowners change.
Yeah.
So are you saying that they denied the variance request?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Even if they moved it in two feet?
Mr. Grant's staff found in the code book legally... Where is that phrase, Steve?
Uh, five foot.
But I mean, it says legally.
Uh, you know, I mean, show that if you're a side yard, cut back a formant, be violated. But again, you know, we're talking variance.
Yeah. The variance is remaining for this, this particular reason. Because that's just our code book, right?
Yes. Which is being redone.
Well, I'm about the same thought, and I wonder if I build them on lot lines. But in this instance, you have no other option in my mind.
This is a textbook example of why you have variance, is that? I guess that's the best way to put it. You're not gonna set a precedent if you grant the variance, because they have to go through the entire process again. They have to go through P and Z, and here, and so on and so forth. Typically, the homeowners, the adjacent property owner, would have some sort of protest, and that would be the end of it. But in this case, Gabe Craig, if I'm wrong, she's still on board. Fighting with a two-and-a-half foot setback.
I remember the P and Z, and of course, uh, they asked the question to whether or not there's any legal means and I could find one, state of time line, so... Do I understand it, or they repeat if you grant the variance?
Well, when you say there's no legal means, there's still a... There's still some of the variance, even though that's what our statute says. Is that correct, Dave?
Yeah, I know it is still lack of variance, but in the, uh... Even the variance, it said, uh... Talked about a principal use structure. And we were talking about the building permit, and it said, "No, uh... No eventual exterior, you know, setback requirement be violated in more than one principal structure. Plus, so the accessory, accessory usage set forth in the above residential voting district." Now, if it weren't done. Maybe in the... Didn't they just got tobacco lot thing?
The back?
The back of the lot. Or not?
Well, I... Yeah, I think we...
Well, it wasn't the setback for the... The house was concerned.
Well, you're gonna be five feet, it doesn't matter how far you go back.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
So I'm confused that... There's no state law that says we can't grant a variance, or is there? No? Okay. I mean, honestly, I have to do this a lot, like, I've got a credit permanent, you know? And they always tell everybody no when they want variance, when they want to go outside the credit limits. And then it comes to me, and then I decide I want to take a bet. And if I don't want to take that bet, I say no, and then it goes to Brian. And then Brian, it's his money, so he can decide if he wants to take a bet on it. Right? I mean, it's not... This is franchise and credit total rule, because they're doing their job. They're saying this does not meet requirements, and therefore...
Yeah.
It'll be denied. But there's a chain to go up.
The due process.
The due process that you go through to see if we do want...
Well, I said it last week, and I'll say it again. I mean, we're trying to enforce something that we have adopted going forward, and we have an old area, old sections of the city we're trying to enforce along. Because if you go up H Street, any part of H Street, the majority of those houses are in the setback, are they not?
Yes, they are. About 70.
So that's my struggle with it. You know, you have two buildings at the back of the property that are basically inches apart.
Well, this is a carport, and I'm not...
Well, it's a permanent structure at the back.
If the house was gonna be moved to a lot line, well, then maybe...
Right.
That would be a difference.
Right.
But Brian, if somebody has issues with this one down the line, are we protected as a council by the decision that P and Z makes?
Are you protected?
Well, their decision not to grant a variance.
Their decision...
I mean, if we vote against that, then that removes us from protecting them relevant.
No, sir, it does not. You're the final, the authority on this. You're the final body. They can't... There is no... Okay. They can't send you to court, so you...
Alright.
And you can get it down on two-and-a-half foot? You can move it to two-and-a-half foot, get what you need. Yeah, I mentioned it again this afternoon. If I can, I'll just shift it over and butt it up like against the house and figure out where that water's gonna come off the pitch. I guess I'll just put it like a gutter system or something. And have it... I mean, if I could, if I could do that, is that legal? I mean, is that... To have it to it in the house? Yeah. Your house? Yeah, yeah, my house. Because right now, where it is, um... I don't know if you can see it. There's probably, uh, maybe a foot and a half between the house and the legs. So I guess if I cut all the legs and shift it over... So you don't want to remove that side of your foot? Really?
Yeah, I'll move that side of your foot and just shift it all to touch the house.
So you're only gonna move a foot width there?
Yeah.
But you're not gonna move it back?
Yes, the front, the front leg will...
The front will be moved back?
Yeah.
The front will be moved back?
To the front porch?
This part is gonna be moved over, so basically the whole part of it's going to be moved, I mean...
Yeah, it can move over and shorten, um, back up to that front porch, fourteen foot, seven foot off the house.
And, uh, the, I guess the owner asked her realtor if me putting that structure up was gonna hurt her, she said no, um. I don't see made a comment, when we first started this adventure, uh, whoever buys the house is buying it knowing that that structure is there already.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, if it was gonna hurt the market value, if I was a homeowner, I'd say no, you can't do it.
Yeah, I even took one of y'all's advice and tried to take those two legs from the front and put it over to her yard and just continue the pitch and give her her own little carport, but that's illegal as well, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm still...
You can't stay in property lines with foot on the structure. Messes up the survey flag.
Mm-hmm.
Well, guys, I'm okay if you move it back, so, seven foot off the house, um, and, and move it in two and a half feet. I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with that, not a problem with putting any variance for that.
Can I ask a question, though, other than the five foot by the guidelines, that's the only reason y'all rejected it?
We did reject it.
Oh.
Because at our last meeting, we naughtlessly voted not to allow it because of the rules or the law that's written in the code book.
Which is what you're supposed to do. Yeah, absolutely.
Because we didn't deny it or go forward with it, because the way Steve and Ev explained to us was kind of a moot point, what we wanted to do, because legally it says you can't do it. So we didn't deny or grant it.
Was there any sort of, so, so the five foot was the only barrier for this, other than that, was there any other issue, was there any other discussion?
Well, there was a discussion, it seemed like they were going to put the carport onto hit the other property that belonged, and we said, no, you couldn't do that.
But if it, was there any discussion about them moving it back two and a half feet, other than it violating the five foot in the code?
No, there was no discussion there.
Okay, so I have any opinions on it?
Well, um, if that's what y'all decide to do, then that's what you do.
If, if y'all had known that you could grant a variance?
Pardon?
If, if, then y'all powered to grant a variance to that five foot rule, would you have done it? Would you have done that?
We did not, the very first meeting, we did grant a variance.
Well, it wasn't drawn up in the very first meeting, from what I heard, from what I heard.
That's why we had the meeting, but did y'all make the second time?
Yes.
You bet three times on it. So on the third time, where you told you could grant a variance to bypass that five foot?
No, not according to what that code says.
But then we can grant a variance, so it's natural.
Capitalize the last sight.
Yeah, but we can grant a variance, that...
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I don't have a problem doing that, to be honest. I have a hard...
You may have a hard, you may have a few requests, but you can grant.
Well, when you look at what you're at, it's basically...
I cheer you, sir.
I mean, because if there were any other options, I'd say you need to do another option, but I just don't see another option.
Well, I thought there was been a discussion if they went to the back.
Well, that'd be better than leaving the five foot setback, the property line.
No, but not right next to the house. The big one, they, they want, they want next to the house.
We can't go to the back because the neighbor owns a section of my backyard, the way it's lined up.
Yeah, technically, that's their shed or something, isn't it, right now?
Technically, the back piece of that, um, on their side, their garage, it sticks out all right about six feet, and then from there, it ails back towards my house about all twelve feet, and then the edge of my storage building is there.
Okay, so back behind your store, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they own all that.
Yes.
And then, uh, putting it in the alley, you can't put it in the alley because then it violates the twenty feet from the middle of the alley.
All right, well, I make motion to grant a variance, uh, for a carport, um, at 30608, there will be seven foot off the house, and, and move the existing structure two and a half foot off the parking lot.
Second?
Second.
All payers say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
One no?
You got one no.
Two no's?
No.
Two no's, two yeses, three, three yeses, two no's, how's that?
I just worry about precedent, Sam, you know, somebody come later and say, look what y'all did here.
You can't tell them, that's immediate.
And I appreciate it, those people are violating by the letter of the law.
I do think, I mean, I do appreciate y'all, I mean, that's, I think y'all look exactly right.
That's why I live there.
I think you did exactly what I think, which is why we compare the brunt of it, I'd say we collectively put two and a half feet, no, and y'all still wish we could hit the back some, you know, he said no.
So it passed, and he, he said he heard about the variance and the different question, correct?
Does he need to apply for the only time day?
Well, he got a key to our...
Yeah, I didn't get that on, huh? That was where this all started from.
And please don't make him file again, Mr. Stone. I'm just calling for a favor.
All right, consider approval of the building permits, I don't believe we had any, did we?
I have one.
You have one?
Yeah.
We don't have...
That ain't quite off, the 30608.
That's the only one.
Make a motion to approve the little town next.
Second? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Do I?
You gotta make sure that it's my poses.
All right. Need a motion to table the audit presentation by Gayla Folton, please?
Make that on the sheet.
Second?
Second.
We are tabling the discussion from Gayla Folton to CPA. Gayla had a couple of, um, questions before she could finalize the report, and so she asked to move it back to the APB.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I did not hear you, sorry, all payers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, good to see you, Minister, just by with the report, please.
Uh, a couple of things, um, real quick, uh, the new vehicles for public works arrived, um, last week, week before, we've got them all in now, correct?
We will have a few, Dave, yeah, we got them all.
And so, um, see some new trucks out and about, um, that's us. We're finishing up on paving, um, the 8th Street, we replaced that water line, uh, this afternoon, or this morning, this afternoon, we worked for the First Baptist Church, um, on the opposite side, um, we have, Monique and I have a meeting, uh, with our TML health insurance provider, um, there may be some changes coming to that, uh, so I want to put that on your, uh, on your radar. Tomorrow, and I'll give it a little bit more detail, but I'm going to a work building board workshop in San Angelo, um, to discuss an extension on the grant that we just got, um, and I'll explain that, you know, once we get into executive. And then, here in about two weeks, there's a USTI, user conference, USTI is the software vendor that we have for utility billing, and if we finish getting everything, we...
They forgot to do software, going back and rework it.
So as we speak, they're still working on it?
Yes.
Okay, we are migrating from a server-based backup system to a cloud-based backup, backup system. Corey's been very fun, uh, this afternoon, he's, he's thoroughly enjoyed...
Yes, ever been.
Um, the, uh, the new collector that was installed at our, uh, for our water, uh, for our reuse system, uh, failed unexpectedly, and so it's covered under warranty, it's been shipped off, but the delivery opportunity for us to, uh, test our handheld, um, drive-by system, which was our, our backup system to that, it worked fine, it worked flawlessly, it took about two hours, three hours to probably read all the meters, drive around town, and so, uh, it worked fine, and so it was a nice little test. Um, but I did inform the vendor that we will not be making, uh, the next payment until we are satisfied with our new collector. And so, uh, they are working on that, uh, we should get some the next PZ. The portal for the customer, uh, side of this, uh, system should be complete, I wasn't by moral there, and so that's another, um, demand that we're putting on the vendor to get completed. And that is all I have at this moment.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Right, here's a request for future added items from City Council, do you have anybody, anything we need to add, please?
Yeah, something, um, I was reading an article about House San Angelo, hired that firm to go in and do with the floodplains, and they had to be, be drawn, and they gained a lot, quite a bit of land for their own back. Now, they contracted with a company, they were doing a very large variance, so it's like a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for this engineering firm to do that. And so, I just don't, I, I would just like to know what the cost are, I mean, we might release, we might open up for development, a lot of land in here, because I don't believe that's still on the floodplain. I think with all these spreader dams, all the lakes that have been put in, because it hadn't been done in forever, that, that we can reclaim a lot of this land and actually be able to use it, uh, for something.
And reduce the insurance.
Right, and then if we want to do something more permanent, like a quad field down there, you know, it, it would be easier. So, it just, I, I don't know what the cost would be, if it comes back as three hundred thousand dollars, you know, thank you, but if it comes back and, and, and it's some engineering firm willing to do it for cheap, cheap, uh, and, and, you know, five, five fours, we're gonna pay, why not do that?
Yeah.
I mean, even if that was a twenty-five, fifty thousand dollar investment, talk about that in the flame.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a return on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a bigger return on.
Um, you may start off with who San Angelo worked with and work my way from there?
Yeah, so, I mean, just check into it, I mean, I, I just run that back.
I'll, I'll see their city engineer or their public works out in months.
Yeah, I'd like to know the background on it, right, they just said the engineering firm, but I don't know the background, you know, oh, by the way, we had a new $500,000 fee from CMO, you know, I had no idea.
Exactly. Anything else?
Uh, can I ask a question, I know Bob brought this up before, about the little tacos thing by Agroco, did we follow anything on that one?
Um...
He's been doing some other stuff.
They are making, they are making improvements, it's not at the pace that I'm comfortable with, is that... I, I know I'm not comfortable with it, I'm pretty sure you're not either, um, they are doing the very bare minimum, um, I spoke, uh, who did I talk to, Fred Chamber, uh, it wasn't Tammy, but, um, supposedly they had some contractor issues, their contractor ran away or walked away or something, and so they're trying to do a lot of things about themselves and, and onsite. Um, I, I mentioned that, that it needs to get into order, drive in a hurry.
Yeah, I don't hear no complaints now, I know you did, but I hear no complaints.
If there was a contractor involved, he needs to be fired.
I think no contractor. I, I don't think that was the issue, I think, I think he got some money and then he was like...
Yeah.
Yeah.
As far as I know, there's no contractor involved, there's several meetings.
What would be the alternative there, shut it down, just leave it in San Angelo?
That, that is, uh, that's the sixty-four thousand dollar question.
He was at the lot sack there for...
Ever.
Ever.
Since they tore the building down.
Ever, and he's just having yellow rope running.
Yeah, now, oh, yeah. Yeah, Kansas was one of the happiest days it ever happened, sold that property.
Well, that was on gas, actually, with the...
It qualified.
Y'all take that, it's up there for years.
Um, that is really, the crux of the deal is, is...
Have you been sent a bunch of...
What's our stick?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, um, we can, we can in place, you know, put fines and liens and whatnot, and there's some, some things, you know, that's, for that same point, but really, to be honest with you, it's, uh, you need to get this thing going, you need to get it finished, you have a specific date to finish this on.
Yeah.
Which reminds me, you have six months to get your variance in place, or you can do the dance all over again.
I was getting ready to say that we have the six-month window in there, that they did theirs?
Yes, yes.
We did? Okay.
Yeah, it's six months.
Sound good to go?
Yes.
You're good to go.
Thank y'all, for all y'all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, on, uh, condemned buildings, that house that's on Broadway, we decided to do about that one, it kind of sits down a little bit, uh...
Oh, and, and, yeah, six of them, yeah, yes, and then, made me call that?
So are we just waiting to tear it down?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Where are we?
Yeah, it's that one that kind of sits down a little.
And we'll put in six?
It's kind of about it, just church crap.
Okay, okay.
How much is it?
Right there across from Side Street to Seventh Street, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh. Okay. The one that burned?
No.
No.
So, we are going to hold that one off.
I'm all for that.
Do we have, we have power and everything?
Some lasers.
I like it all, that's better, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
And it's ready to be torn down, and, with the dam, level nine?
Yeah.
And they're not living in it, Rob?
No.
Okay.
I think we've got two more out here at the entrance in the town, about ready to go to.
We try to get these five to ten before we get the...
Well, yeah, we thought we're gonna have to run machines out.
Right, right, that's what I mean. All right. All right, anything else?
Sam, I wish Steve would give me the job of taking down all these unsatiable posters that appear on telephone poles and down cell phones, real estate, you know what I'm talking about?
You're talking about...
Internet. Yeah, internet, that's it, that's it.
Um...
They really detract from the city.
Do we have any ordinance on that, because the, the, if it's on a city poll or city property, we can take that down, Texas, I was pretty good about it, it's not putting anything up.
Right.
Advertisement wise, on theirs, um...
Yeah, these are unspoken.
Vibe owns those.
I think they don't have any of them, that ours, uh, covers is, uh, rock sale, sign.
Well, the vibe owns them, they certainly know if somebody else is advertising internet.
Vibe or ATP.
Yeah. I'll, I'll get into it if you're willing.
You know, and I wish people would have served the, uh, the thing of taking down the restaurants.
Some news, some no.
Yeah, I know.
Is that it?
Yeah, for me.
Awesome.
Anything from you, David? Anything from you, buddy?
You gotta think of who you're dating.
As much as I love y'all, she's the boss. She's been on.
All right, founder of City Council, so we need to take...
All right, founder of city council shall be in executive session is authorized by Texas government code section 551.071. Consultation with city attorney, update on alternative rather.